Needs, monies to address those needs would be looking backwards and not looking forward.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to state for the record that I did support this bill in the Ways and Means Committee. Part of my reasoning behind that was that this is an agreement that was negotiated between the Comptroller and Grace Hill. You know, the Comptroller's office, who maintains these properties on behalf of the city of St. Louis, entered into good faith negotiations in an agreement with Grace Hill based upon, you know, Grace Hill's financial ability and also the history that they have with these properties. Grace Hill has, you know, contributed millions of dollars into the improvements of these facilities, which the city has not done and has neglected its obligations, you know, per our charter to provide hospitals to our citizens in this city. You know, there are multiple crises happening in the city of St. Louis. The fiscal crisis certainly is one of them, but we do have a healthcare crisis on top of that. You know, my support, you know, for this bill was based upon that negotiation that happened with the Comptroller's office and full faith, you know, with them. You know, during the Ways and Means Committee, you know, there was discussion in regards to whether or not Grace Hill would be able to pay more for these properties. And, you know, Grace Hill said that they would have to, this was the representative, and I believe the CFO of Grace Hill said, you know, they were not sure if they would be able to. You know, they would certainly look into it, you know, but they would need approval from their board of directors. And I find it very peculiar that we are amending the purchase amount of this agreement that was negotiated with the full faith of the Comptroller's office on the floor of the Board of Aldermen. And I would inquire of my colleague from the 23rd Ward, if I may.
Alderman from the 23rd, will you yield for questioning to Alderman from the 25th?
Absolutely.
Alderman from the 25th, please proceed.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to know if you have had any direct conversations with Grace Hill, their CFO, or their board of directors since the week of our, or since the time of our meeting with them in our Ways and Means Committee hearing to negotiate, or do you have direct knowledge if the sponsor of this amendment has had any direct conversations with Grace Hill to negotiate a higher purchase price for these buildings?
They come to the Ways and Means meeting, and we talk there. That's where I form my opinion. I don't go around on board bills after the fact trying to renegotiate stuff. This was introduced, I voted against this in Ways and Means. This was introduced today. It's the first time I saw it. I have not discussed it with any other Alderman. I agree with it.
But you publicly stated that you would support this amendment, and in doing so, you are negotiating with Grace Hill at this point in time. You are telling Grace Hill that they need to pay $180,000 more on this particular amendment and another $280,000 more on the next amendment that's planned to be introduced for these two buildings. So, having known that, and also having known that Grace Hill would need to go back to their board of directors in order to get prior approval, in order to accept or pay any additional funds, have you, or do you have knowledge if the sponsor of this amendment has gone to Grace Hill, or their board of directors, or their CFO, to actually obtain and ascertain whether or not they would be able to negotiate further and pay a higher amount for this, these buildings?
No, I agree with the committee substitute.
So, Mr. President, you know, my-
Do I have to answer it, or not?
I believe I have the floor. You answer it.
I thought, no, I'm still answering the question.
I asked the question, you answered.
No, I did not answer it.
I have the floor. So, you know, with that, you know, I would like to say that I will be opposed to these amendments primarily because, you know, there hasn't been any good faith negotiations with Grace Hill since the time of our Ways and Means Committee hearing, even though Grace Hill did, they did state that they may be able to, but there has been no negotiations taken place since the time of that meeting with their board of directors. And if the intent of that, you know, these amendments is to, you know, raise the purchase price for these buildings, I would expect that those conversations would be had with the organization who has been maintaining these properties, investing millions of dollars into those communities, and supporting healthcare for, you know, underprivileged people in the city of St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 8th.
Okay, wow.
Alderman from 23rd, you're gonna have to wait. You've been here.
I'm not doing anywhere. I'll ask you a question.
We'll get to you, Alderman.
All right, Alderman, I'll get to you. Okay. Let's get back to focus. I mean, you know, we are a business. You know, I am a taxpayer in the city, and every, every person that lives in the 8th Ward is a taxpayer, and every resident of the 8th Ward owns a little portion of this piece of city property. And we're pretty darn charitable minded. And when I negotiate with charities and in the private business world, you know, we'll give them a break. We'll give them a big break. We'll give them a very big economic break, but we usually don't do 90% off. And I know that people said, well, you know, they've been putting millions of dollars into this building, but they got a building that was worth, and they're renting a building that's worth a million and a half or a million point four for $25 a year. Now, in the business world, sometimes you rent buildings cheaply if the tenant's doing the improvements. That's what they, that's the arrangement that they had. They got cheap rent because they would do the improvements. If the city would have done the improvements like a normal landlord, we would have gotten more rent. That's how real estate and the economics of the real estate deals work. You give them cheap rent, they do the improvements, take responsibility net-net-net lease, what we would call net-net-net lease. This is even more than net-net. They have to build out their own things. What's kind of off the wall is the Comptroller's office just accepted that they said $100,000, that there were no negotiations. Residents of the 8th Ward and every ward own a portion of this building. If you want to give them a break, let's give them 50% off. You know, 50% off, we would be giving them $700,000 deal. Or if we give them, you know, 80% off, what the Alderman from the 13th Ward is suggesting is that we are giving them $1,120,000 of free value. Now, this bill is here today because it got here today. It's not your fault and my fault. It's not that we're against healthcare, but we have a responsibility to balance the healthcare and balance the economics of property that is owned by everybody in the city of St. Louis. We want to give them a break. I'd say charging someone 20 cents on a dollar for something is a pretty darn good break. I do a lot of good charity down in the 8th Ward, and many of my organizations do, but, you know, I'd have a hard time pushing, pushing that one on anyone, even myself. I wouldn't even have started with this particular deal. They have a 19-year lease. They can continue to lease this for $25 a year if they don't like the $280,000 number. Each of us represent people in the city of St. Louis that own that building. And if the Comptroller's office just accepted the first number that was thrown out, well, that is really offensive, that if there are considerations, there's community considerations, there's public health considerations, there are considerations above and beyond price, that's what the Comptroller's office should have brought in at that particular point in time, not that we just took $100,000 and we're wiping off the $1.3 million. I don't know all of the economics, and maybe the whole bill should go back to the Ways and Means Committee so that they can resolve these issues so that this property can be sold. Because on the final analysis, I think on final passage, it's gonna need 20 votes because it's a sale of city property. And that may be very difficult to come, come by even at 280. That, in my ward, we try to be fiscally responsible. If there is a legitimate reason above and beyond what the Alderwoman from the 5th Ward said, because some of those explanations she got weren't business-related explanations. Well, they were there for 19, they've got 19 years left on their lease. They're putting those improvements in. Those individuals that told you that didn't say, well, they got the cheap rent because they would put in the improvements. That's how you do business. I would support this amendment. I don't know that a 20% is a fair enough deal for the taxpayers of the city of St. Louis. I'll listen more before I make a final decision, but to get something at 80% off, and the Comptroller's office not actually document all of this in advance, and unfortunately, the Alderwoman from the 5th Ward has to try to document the rationale today when it should have been done by the Comptroller's office prior to the Ways and Means getting this. And then that way, we can make the taxpayers of the city of St. Louis, A, realize we made an informed decision to help the healthcare throughout the city of St. Louis, but all the while be fairly wise and frugal with respect to their money because the money belongs to everybody in the city of St. Louis. Thank you.
Alderman from the 23rd.
I could either pose this as a question or answer the question that I was originally asked, whichever you prefer. But as long as I've been here, and I'm not, you know, I'm learning as I go, we debate stuff in committee. If we're not happy, it's change in committee, it's a committee substitute. If we're not happy with that, when we come out, we're still against it. We come out and we do a floor substitute. We don't go out and start trying to negotiate contracts. I was against it in committee. I didn't get the committee substitute. I want it there. I'm against it on the floor. So, we do a floor substitute. We don't go out and start negotiating. I mean, last I checked, that's how we work here.
Are you answering my question?
No, I'm answering your question.
Alderman from 23rd, you direct your discussions toward me, not to Alderman from the 25th.
I just wanted to answer that question, but it, but it's my understanding if we're not happy with something, we try to change it in committee. If we can't get a change in committee, then it goes to the full floor, the full board, and we discuss it. Whether you're far or against it, afterwards, we'll probably all go out to dinner together. We're not gonna be enemies over this. There's a difference of opinions on this one particular bill. But this was something when I came out, I support the floor substitute, but that is my understanding of how we work as a board, and we try to come together to make the best decision. That's why it takes 28 Aldermen to make a decision, because it helps us to make good decisions. At the end, whether this passes or it fails, it will be, basically, the whole city, you know, it'll be representatives of the whole city making this decision. I won't get my feelings hurt either way. I just, this is how I stand on this particular bill. I just think, you know, that's just my thoughts. I wanted to answer that question.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. So, now we've done all of our flowery political statements that are required. I want to talk about some facts, some analytical discussions that were done in that committee meeting, and talk about it the way it should be talked about. This piece of property was an abandoned piece of property for a number of years, and the value at that point was very, very low to none. Once the Grace Hill moved in, and over a number of years, it has come to almost $6 million that they invested in this property. When the appraisal was done, the appraisal was done on the improved property, which was not the city's funds. Those were Grace Hill's funds. And so, when you look at that type of appraisal, and you sit down to do a contract as you would do with a net-net lease contract for someone who's been in your property for a while, they've continued to improve it, they've upgraded it, you give them consideration of value on their side of the line. So, when you looked at that price, the price gave them consideration for the millions of dollars that they had put into the property, which gave us that appraised value. If they had not been there, if they had not put the millions of dollars in there, then our property would be not worth anything to us, basically, if it had been sitting there empty for a number of years. So, that's where they came up with the price. And the Comptroller's office in that meeting were very specific and detailed and tried to explain to us, and I thought they did a very good job, of how they came to that conclusion. Now, at the end of the day, and I've heard this many, many times in here too, let the professionals do this. Let the professionals do this. We gonna take the information and let the professionals give us this information. So, the professionals did it. The lawyers, the appraisers, the auditors, the Comptroller's office, the CEOs with Grace Hill, and their, their knowledge and their documents on what they had put into the building, those were all the professionals with professional information that brought us to this conclusion of this sale price. Now, if we want to talk about being fiscally responsible, that's our new term for everything we don't like lately. We weren't fiscally responsible when we gave them a lease. Why would you give somebody a lease that cheap in the first place? So, then, and I'm not asking anybody a question. I'm making statements. I don't want anybody to respond to me. I'm only making statements. I'm not asking questions, Mr. President. So, why are we now talking about being fiscally responsible? Because all those years that sit there, when times were better, we should have been addressing those things. When you look at how you govern anything, you go back periodically. You should have benchmarks, timetables, where you review all real estate property, its value to you, and where it should be positioned in your portfolio. That wasn't done. We were not fiscally responsible. Bills that we have passed here in the last 18 months to two years, budget hasn't been any different. It's been bad. It's been trouble. We get, we said the Kiel Opera House had no value at all. Do you remember that? And everybody was, yay. We said, and we let the professionals do that deal too. Remember, we had the PowerPoints? We had representatives from all the various offices. They came in and told us everything. Now, anybody that looks across that street and says that the Kiel Opera House had no real estate value, no equity, and you put it in a deal like that, don't talk about being fiscally responsible today. But just simply say you want some more money. Now, I am not in agreement with asking them for more money because, again, the value of the property is not our money. It's their money. They put that money in there to bring the value to where it is today. So, that's why the Comptroller's office asked for that amount of money. They didn't just pull a number out of the air. There was analysis put to this, and that's how it's done in the real professional world every day. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from 27.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, when this, when the buildings came to the committee, Health Committee, years ago, the city of St. Louis was losing the grip of maintaining all of the Connect Care buildings throughout the city of St. Louis, all of them. We were gonna lose them. And if we would have lost these buildings, all these buildings would have been vacant, and these communities would not have today access to healthcare. You gotta think about that. I think one of my colleagues mentioned earlier, the FQACs are put out there as a safety net, so is Connect Care. Now, the city of St. Louis gave $5 million to Connect Care to maintain the building over on Delmar today. Think about all the buildings we got in our city today, and think about all the buildings we literally gave away over the years, a dollar. A lot of constituents call us today, hey, do we have a building for a dollar in your community? We're talking about a facility that has been enhanced. We're talking, not just one, the one on River View in my community has been enhanced with hundreds of thousands of dollars. But like my colleague from the 3rd Ward said, it's not so much the money that was invested in these buildings, it's the lives we are trying to save today. Now, I know a lot of the Aldermen didn't say we shouldn't mention it too, but it's just like mentioning healthcare and housing. You can't talk about one without talking about the other. This is the same thing we're talking about today. We cannot talk about the reconstruction of the healthcare of this city unless we talk about the buildings that our people go to. And the FQACs, thank God, are there. Thank God, they stepped up to the plate. I mean, people, all the buildings we have lost in our city, all the vacancies, we don't have a few hundred, we have thousands, thousands. We don't need another vacant building in our community, and we don't need a building such as this where people are coming into our community, spending millions of dollars, and want to enhance. The Alderman from the 3rd got a new building. You don't see the private hospitals coming into our community? You don't. Everything's federally funded or city-funded. It's that simple. I know the Alderwoman has been working very hard, trying to get this building open, trying to get it in hands. All of us have. But to say that they don't have money, think about the million, millions and millions of dollars. Over the years, we have given to all the commercial industry, the private industry. We have given buildings away. Not only do we give buildings away, we gave them a tax credit, we gave them a TIF behind it. We have just given away millions of dollars. We're talking about one building in my colleague's ward. I am truly supporting my colleague on this. I think the citizens of the city need to be appalled that we are pushing people now to the corner to get more money. That is totally unfair. We should not be doing that. We should be a progressive city. Why aren't we a progressive city? Why do we come to the city of St. Louis and people say, oh, man, I gotta go through this process? I want to help the city. I want to put money in the city. But then we push them into a corner. Let some large 500 company come in here, we give them the building, we give them TIFs, and we give them tax credits. I know we need the money. I understand. We need the money. I think my colleague was very noble of trying to get more money. There's nothing wrong with that. We need more money. But we also need to be going into this administration to find out, there's a whole lot of money hidden throughout this administration. Let's try to find the money there and bring it forth. Let's not also put our employees on furlough again. Let's make sure they don't go on furlough. I mean, there's a lot of money out there, Alderman. Let's be honest. Yeah. And we need to get those funds. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on Amendment 1? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 5th, you recommend-
Yes, Mr. President. I'm opposed to Amendment Number 1, and I want to clarify a couple of things from my perspective. In Ways and Means, the Comptroller's office did explain that that was the price that was offered. They didn't just offer them a price. They had hired Michelle Duffy as their real estate broker, who had done the research, who had gathered the documentation of how much money had been invested since the time that they had leased the building from the city in terms of the value of the property to be considered, as well as the other things that they presented. Jim Gervellia had said that he had gotten appraisal done, and those of you that know about appraisals know there are more than one type of appraisal. And so, the appraisal that was done, the reason I mentioned about the lease and some others, did not consider those things. But even in the appraisal that was done, after he considered that they had invested millions of dollars into the building that, as the Alderwoman from the 19th said, made the value, what the appraisal said today, that is why they came up and agreed that that was a fair price. That was not just a price picked out of the air, as some people have made it seem like there's no information, nothing was talked about in the committee hearing. And those of you that know Jim Gervellia, I think you should, you know how he generally does, and he knows that question is asked of him when he generally comes to Ways and Means to talk about the value of the, of the property. As was stated, the value of the property when the city owned the property before it was, the improvements were made, were very low. The reason the value of the property is what it is today is because the money that they invested. And so, then to turn around and ask them to then pay more because they already invested and hence brought up the value of the property, and so we want to benefit from that, I believe is not fair. The other thing that has been said a couple of times is they have $7 million. The person who handles accounting was there and let us know that they have $3 million, and the other four million is in assets. So, it keeps being thrown around as if they have $7 million cash sitting there, and that was also explained in committee. Another part that was in the agreement with them and documents they gave to the Comptroller's office is the fact that it is not just the 1.2, the 2.1 million dollars from the federal government, but it is also $3 million of their reserves that they are putting into the buildings. They are currently renting space downtown that when they get through making these improvements to the building, they will bring their administrative offices that are currently renting and be able to put in this building that hopefully they will own. And so, there's also additional money that's being borrowed. So, it's not this surplus, as people have said, just sitting around, and that's just money they could do anything with. And when you talk about healthcare, and you look at the services and the needs for those who have said that this isn't about healthcare, it absolutely is about healthcare. This is what they do. This is what this building has to be forever used for. And so, every dime that they use for something else does take away from the services that they actually provide, that go to the people. And so, to say that they could spend money that they have in their reserves, and it wouldn't affect any healthcare services, that doesn't make sense. That doesn't make sense. Absolutely, it does. And if we, if for anyone who was interested, that wanted to find out more about what they do, I had talked about in committee how, over the years, anytime they have grants, and they write for grants constantly, and anytime they receive grants, and maybe it's a year or two-year grant, and then they don't have that money anymore, then those services aren't there until they can find the money again. So, yes, they have some money in reserves because they have been fiscally responsible in their operating, but it doesn't mean that it does not dictate how much services they could put on the street. Certainly, it does. There is, I mean, if they had $50 million, they could provide a whole more, a lot more services right now, and there always has been a waiting list for people who are waiting to get an appointment there. Sometimes you call, you can't get an appointment for several months because they have limits because of how much money they have, because of how much services they're able to provide, because of their limited resources. So, to say that, you know, you can, it's not gonna affect the services you could provide if you spend more money on, on buildings, it does affect it. They could provide even more services if they had more money. But if you are operating fiscally responsible, you don't spend every dime you have and leave nothing in reserves. And as I said, they explained to us that there was $3 million in the reserves, and when they talk about on the tax returns that Alderman Wessels had brought up in committee, $3 million of that was dollars, and $4 million was assets that they have. And to say that the city is in a financial crisis, so now we want to, now is the time to balance our budget on the backs of poor people? Because that's what this equates to. I don't care how you turn it. It does. We have sat here, and I'm just going through a budget. I can stand here and go through a whole bunch of things I could bring up that happened and was brought out in the budget hearings that show we are not being fiscally responsible. And some of the Aldermen that stand up and spoke weren't willing to vote for some of those things. We can make a whole lot of changes and cuts, and I can fine you way more than $280,000. But who down here is gonna want to talk about that on the floor? And is gonna want to vote for that? So, to me, I'm really confused that some of the same people have sat on that committee and voted to sell buildings for $1 to private developers who certainly, we could argue, had more money, whether it was their private money or money from the development because it was for profit, and they would stand to make fees once the development is accomplished. But because we understand that they were going to invest in the property, we were all willing to sell them the property for $1, regardless of what the appraisal said. And those conversations have happened many times. We sit on HUDs, and we vote for tax abatement, where homes are selling for $4, $5, and $600,000, where certainly we can argue that the person buying that home didn't need to receive tax abatement. I don't care if it was five years. But yet, we sit here and we vote for it because we understand the importance of having the persons in the, in the homes paying taxes at some point, spending money in the city, and being able to attract people to want to live here. So, there are reasons outside of whether we need the money, that we do the things we do in order to make the city a place where we would be able to sustain ourselves. But in terms of people bringing up fiscally responsible in a financial crisis, we could argue that it's things we pass in that budget that would say we couldn't be in a financial crisis. And because I brought up questions about many of those things, people talked about me like I had committed a crime. And some of those same people now are talking about, let's be fiscally responsible, and the city's budget and the crisis, and now you want to charge an agency that their whole purpose, their healthcare department's whole purpose is to provide healthcare to people who can't do any better for themselves. And we have failed them. The numbers prove that. The research proves it. And the city does have a responsibility to make sure that there are service to those who are underinsured and who are not insured at all. And that's what they do. And to say that if they spent more, that's not gonna affect their healthcare. How could you say that? You don't know anything about what they do, Alderman from the 23rd. To sit up here and say, I'm not asking you a question, and I had a floor. So, for you to sit up and say, it's not gonna affect them at all, you didn't ask one question in that meeting. You didn't make one comment. And I think that's very unfair. That is unfair to sit here and talk as if you know anything about this organization, what they do, how many programs they are still put on the back burner because they don't have the money. The slash is that we just got notification, if you've been watching the national news and pulling off the information online, the cuts that are currently projected for the federally funded health cares are going to be disastrous. So, for us to talk about it in terms as if they just have a chest of gold over here, and they're just being selfish, and it wouldn't mean anything for them to give us more money. Yes, I would like for us to receive more money. But the value is, they have invested in a property that we had sitting there that was dilapidated, and was empty and vacant, and people around there who are, numbers are comparable to third world countries. So, the need is great. Everyone says, oh, we think we need the healthcare. We're not saying we don't need it, but you are impacting them in their budget. And it does reflect what our values are. Anytime we can sit here and we can say that we're comfortable with giving private developers buildings that had higher appraisals than a dollar, and we could sell them the building for a dollar because of what they were gonna invest, but in terms of providing healthcare services for poor people- to invest. But in terms of providing healthcare services for poor people, we would say, well, you know, they have some reserves so they could pay us more. We want them to do healthcare where they could pay us more. But it doesn't make sense for them to keep spending more money in a building that they do not own. And so really, you know, if, in my opinion, what they would say is, well, we just pay you the hundred and ninety dollars over nineteen years. We give you your ten dollars at the end of this year, and we'll keep doing what, what we do. There's probably going to be some grants we don't receive because we don't own the property, but we're going to keep doing the best we can do with what we have. I think that it's unfair, and I think that the way that we have the process we've laid out with determining what we value the building at, we've always taken in consideration how much money you were going to invest in it. The money they've invested so far is not the end. They are still going to invest millions in it. So we've always considered that in selling a building, which is the only reason why we've been willing to sell buildings for a dollar before. So I don't want it talked about as if there are not future plans. All that has been, has been discussed. There are millions of dollars that's going into this, millions of dollars that are getting invested, several millions of dollars of their reserves that's going to be used to make the improvements. And so like I said, I think this is the right thing to do. We didn't choose to sell it to them for a dollar this time. The Comptroller's Office could have probably looked at all the information that was presented to them and came to the conclusion that that would have been fair. But because we do need to find as much money as we can, where we can, and that's everywhere, not just balance the budget on the backs of poor people, but when you talk about other departments who are spending money unapproved and other waste that we find, and we try to talk about that, and then I'm labeled the bad person, and not too many people want to vote for that. So I don't understand it when we bring up fiscally responsible, because we could be talking all day long and make some changes on that. But I do understand that every dollar that takes away from this organization, it is a dollar that you have taken away from providing healthcare services for people of low income, and there are working people who just cannot afford insurance that go to this place. So we're not just talking about people who some people think are undesirable and just sit at home looking at TV all day. We're talking about the working class people who cannot pay for insurance and who even though they call for appointments, wait two and three months to get a dentist appointment, two and three months to get a doctor's appointment, because this, this federally funded healthcare center is overwhelmed, or, or safety net, as they call it, is overwhelmed. All the research and data is there by zip code, broken down by our own professionals to prove that. And that is what we're talking about today. Every dollar that comes away from them is a dollar that did not go to the people. And I don't care how you dress it up and you put it. And we could have the, and you don't just talk about stuff here. Absolutely, we respond to emails. We call companies. We can ask developers questions. To say that we only talk about the changes we want and make them when we come to the floor is ridiculous. If I have a question or a concern of someone, to say that I don't have the intellect to pick up the phone and call that person, or another Alderman would think that I shouldn't call someone and get more information about a bill before I voted on it is ridiculous. Absolutely, we can call anybody we want and gather whatever information we want, and oftentimes we do. We don't just wait till we come to the floor to bring something up. And what I, the way I've tried to handle my business for the past fourteen years is I have my conversations before I get here. You don't see me doing a whole lot of standing up, grandstanding on the floor, because I try to go and do my research, talk to the Alderman, talk to the sponsors, what have you, before I even get to this point, and especially so in committee. But, um, yes, you can talk to people and you should talk to people. That's what you're here for. And once again, to just state a price and then say, I can't say that they would agree to, I think it's fair to ask them. They have been, they didn't just come to the comptroller and they approved it that week. They've been going back and forth with Jim Gervellia since last year, until everyone was comfortable with the information that was provided to him and for them to show proof of what they had spent and proof of what they plan to spend over this next couple of years. And so once again, I, I would oppose the amendment, and, and I would like to, um, you know, have support for the bill as was presented, after much negotiating and going back and forth and making sure that it was a fair price, and everything was taken into consideration as to where our values are.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighth.
Yes, Mr. President. And, and again, just to point out how leases actually work. When this Grace Hill got the original lease, most businesses that you see on the street or in your wards, in that if they're renting, they have a five-year lease, and they pay high rent because the, the unit's fixed up. And then they'll have a five-year option maybe to renew one more time. You give people twenty-five-year leases, and this was specifically negotiated six years ago. You say, I'll give you a twenty-five-year lease, but you do all these improvements. And, and the reason that they did it that way, that, that the nominal dollar amount was that they were going to do those improvements themselves and the landlord wasn't. And the guarantee that they got is they got this low rent for twenty-five years. Whatever the building was worth when this lease started, the nominal rent was still a giveaway to them, but it also assured them that if they put in millions of dollars into this property, that they would get to use it for twenty-five years at practically no cost. That's why they had the deal that they had. That was the logic when they did it. That's the economics of the deal that they made. Now, six years into this lease, and a number of those improvements been made, whatever millions of dollars have been made, now they want to buy the property. They didn't make a correct business decision at some point in time. They get to use that property for nineteen more years. And those of you here, if you've ever put a new kitchen in your house, or you've done an addition on your house, the idea there is, is that you'll enjoy it, but in nineteen years, my wife will want a new kitchen again. These things wear out. That's why they did a twenty-five-year lease. They got a good deal there. It was the right incentives. It was the right incentives for them, and it was appropriately the right incentives, I would assume, for the city at that point in time. Now they'd say, well, we'd like to buy it. We'll buy it for a hundred thousand. It's contrary to what they originally started off doing. And my point is, if it's worth one point four, one point five million, whatever million it is, one point four, if they buy it for a hundred thousand, tomorrow they could go turn around and borrow eighty percent on it and get a million dollars out of that property, which may help their services or may not help their services. But the significant thing is here, two things. One is, is twenty percent, if we give them, we're basically giving them one point one million dollars if we sell it at twenty percent. That's a pretty good deal. I mean, I'll have to explain it to my constituents that we gave up one point one million dollars to this charitable organization because we didn't charge full appraised value. But that's what you're doing if you accept it at twenty percent appraisal. We are giving them a gift. They don't have to take it. They don't have to buy it, and they have nineteen more years on their lease. They don't have to accept it if we make the amendment. They don't have to accept it. You know, I would feel more comfortable, but went back to committee, I got more details, but, you know, I haven't seen the appraisal. I haven't seen these other things that are associated with it, and I would be impossible for me to vote to give up that much money, one point three million dollars of city money for what otherwise was a big, a good cause, and they're not going anywhere because they have nineteen more years on their lease. They're not going anywhere. Even if they did another million dollars worth improvements, whatever you spend a million dollars on today is going to be worthless in the nineteenth year. That if it's worth one point four million, at least Alderman from the thirteenth has said, wow, that is pretty, you know, that we're giving them one point three million in value, and it doesn't matter if it's the money that they put in, or the value of the bricks and mortar, or the value of the land. The deal was, we charge you no rent, you put these improvements in, and you can stay here for twenty-five years. That was the original deal with this organization. It probably makes sense. We are concerned about the healthcare, not just of the residents of the fifth ward, but we should be, you know, concerned about the healthcare of the residents of the whole city and the economic viability of the whole city. And I believe that the Alderman from the thirteenth ward, in asking for another, you know, limiting, giving them from one point three million dollars to giving them one point one million dollars on this sale, has made a moderate compromise that, you know, I believe I can justify it within my community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third.
I just want to clarify two things, even though it wasn't a direct question. One, I did ask questions in the meeting. And two, if you're going to make changes, you can't make them anywhere else but in committee and on the floor. And to suggest otherwise that coming here is inappropriate was wrong, and saying that I don't ask questions or didn't ask questions, which is more of a personal attack than an attack on the bill. I did ask. That's what I said, that when the question I asked was, what do you have in reserves? I mean, it, it came up right away. I mean, I did ask questions in that meeting. To say I didn't is just not true.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further question? Alderman from thirteen, you recognize, Alderman from the twenty-eighth, sorry, Alderman from twenty-eighth, you recognize for discussion on amendment number one to board bill one hundred, committee substitute, just in case you forgot. Been here a little while.
Uh, is it appropriate at this time to ask a question of the sponsor of the bill?
Yes, yes.
Okay, with the sponsor, you'll?
Alderman from the fifth, will you yield for questioning to Alderman from the, from the twenty-eighth?
Thank you.
Keeping the questions directed toward the.
I will, thanks. Did you say, um, Alderwoman, why Grace Hill wants to, uh, own this building now rather than just continuing to lease it and sort of go along as usual per the terms of their lease?
Yes, once again, because of the amount of work that was needed in the building and to the building. They've continued to pour millions into it, which has been a concern of their board as to why would you keep putting millions of dollars into a building that the city could come back and say, okay, now we want to take it and we're going to sell it to someone else, per se. But it's been, uh, outside of board's concerns, they've still been marching on with the lease. But outside of that, it's come up when they continue to write for the federal grants. That's why I, before this, I brought a bill, a board bill to the committee about this very thing, where we had to change the lease, to put in there that we promised as the city that we would always let it stay as a healthcare center. Because for the last two point one million dollar grant that they got the end of last year, that came up as a concern, and that was a requirement. In order for them to get the money, since the city owned the building, the lease they asked was that the city would promise that, you know, we would let, at least not say that we always had the lease to Grace Hill, but say that we always have it forever as a community health center.
Okay.
And so, like I said, once again, it's come up when you apply for grants, and that's how they run their whole operation. Healthcare is this a fairly funded healthcare clinic. And what they've said is, they would be able to receive, they believe they would be, it would be easier for them to go after money and receive money for a building that they own and can satisfy, um, the government and other investors, that this will always be here for this purpose.
Okay. And, and they don't have any intention of selling this building and doing something else, or?
No, they, they, no, uh-uh, no. We, they're, they are, uh, have agreed that the building will forever be healthcare center.
Okay.
Providing healthcare services.
So they really want to be able to, uh, pledge of sorts this building so that it will enable them to get the federal grants because they are going to be there steady forever? Not, not forever. That's a poor choice of words, but for the long term?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. And for people that, I mean, you know, when you, we go back and forth on the praise value, once again, the value is what it is because of what they've invested over the years. And so, and they have future plans, because they're renting some spaces downtown, and they have future plans to put about five million into the building to bring all their administrative services and offices there. Because it doesn't make sense. They're so spread out and scattered now trying to rent a space here, rent a space there. But they're not comfortable in doing that on a building that they don't even, um, own.
Okay.
And there is nothing in that lease that they have with us that made it mandatory for them to make a certain amount of improvements. The building, the, the, the building, it was a good idea to lease it to them because they are providing a service, a healthcare service, to those who are underserved and don't have insurance. And so generally, this is not the first time the city has been willing to do that. If you're providing a service and you're a nonprofit, I mean, oftentimes we will say, okay, that's something that's needed, that's got a great value in it, and so we will, you know, give you this building or we'll sell it to you at a minimum price because of what you're doing. You're not going to be making a bunch of money. You're not a private developer.
Right.
And so we've, we've done this with, uh, services other than just even healthcare over the years.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Alderman from the third.
Uh, uh, Mr. President, I just want to point out a few things. The reason Grace Hill is down there in the first place because there's a need. They'd be much safer if they were out in the central west end over on Lindo and King's Highway someplace. But there's no need out there. They're there because that is where the need is. And there's no need for them to even talk about asking not for, for profit organizations, I mean, businesses to donate to the city. They're not going to do that. But they'll certainly donate to Grace Hill, who's a five-on-one C three not-for-profit, and give them money for helping the indigent people where the need really is. It's all about where the need is. It's not about anything else. That building, they could, Grace Hill could go almost anywhere. But if they went someplace else, in the middle of downtown, right here where all those expensive lofts are, the poor people are down there. They even passed an ordinance to keep the poor people, homeless people from coming east to Tucker Street over there. The need is where Grace Hill is located. So why not help those people? You don't know whether one of those kids whose lives they save from some disease may grow up, uh, to, to be a George Washington car. They could be a Barack Obama. You never can tell. But if you don't help them and they end up dying or end up, uh, unable because of illnesses that could have been avoided if we just allowed that health center to stay there and help some people who couldn't help themselves, there's no telling. It's not about money, people. It's about what's best for the city of St. Louis. It's about what's best for the people. And if we, those that have been voted on to come down here to look out for the best interests of the people in our ward, don't look out for those people in our ward, what good are we here in the first place? And that's what our job is. First, to the city of St. Louis, to the constituency. Now, if the city of St. Louis doesn't provide the healthcare and they, and they impose diseases on everybody else, that are a whole lot of other people who ordinarily wouldn't have it, the city has not done its job. That's why they created healthcare for the indigent, because they know they were not capable of being able to take care of themselves. So I would say, it's not about money, people. It's about what's right, and it's about who needs help, and how are we going to help them. Those people who are trapped at the bottom of the economic ladder can't help nobody, can't even help themselves. What we can help them is those that we reach down and help is what matters, not what you do for yourself. That don't count. And when each one of us ever get to the pearly gates up there, if we make it, they will ask for your story. And you start talking about what all I did for me, what all I accomplished, it ain't going to matter. It's what you did for somebody else that makes a difference. And those poor people down there trapped at the bottom of the economic ladder who need healthcare more than anybody else, those are the people. Because those people, if you allow them to get sick, they may spread some of it up in your neighborhood. You never can tell, because they're not going to stay there forever. So let's reach down and help them. That little amount of money that you're talking about isn't even worth the life of one of these children. And we can make a difference today. I mean, that little money, that, that doesn't amount to anything. It doesn't matter. But what we do to help them out of that economic and financial and the, um, healthcare crisis that they're into, that's what we got to look that they're into, that's what we got to look at. It ain't about the money. It's about being able to save somebody and help somebody that can't help themselves.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from 13th, you recognize the close on amendment number one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for a roll call vote on this amendment. I think, a few things. You know, the idea that I or someone who would offer an amendment like this should run over to Grace Hill and negotiate it, you know, is a little bit unrealistic. This thing was passed out of committee last week. You know, there is no, and on a, I don't know, it wasn't a close vote. So Grace Hill knows, they're not going to negotiate with one alderman. What we have, though, is the opportunity to increase the sale price. And then, if Grace Hill doesn't care about, they could, then at that point, they'll be glad to negotiate, I guarantee you. Although I think they'd accept this. It's such a nominal fee for the building that, for a 1.4 million dollar building, 280,000 is a bargain. The impact, if this amendment would pass, the additional funds would have absolutely, absolutely no impact on the services that Grace Hill provides. As I said before, they got over 7 million dollars in their unrestricted, unrestricted fund balance. They also have millions more in assets. All right, this is a well-run organization. Why do they want this property? Why do they want to pay 100,000 dollars for this property when they have a 10 dollar a year lease? They want it because they can get millions, and I mean millions of dollars, in federal grants. That's how they put all this money in the building to begin with. It's not like they went out to the bank and borrowed it, okay? They got millions, tens of millions of dollars. All you have to do is read the Business Journal, there was an article in it about a year ago, and the article described all the federal grants that came into the city. And Grace Hill is right up there at the top. And that's fine, I'm happy that they are. All I'm asking is that we be reasonable and prudent stewards of the city's assets. You know, somebody said, more than one person, said that we're giving away large buildings for 1 dollar. I have never seen us give away a building for a dollar that was, that had a real viable appraised value like these have. We're not giving, we have never given away buildings of this nature like we are today. So with that, I'll close. Thank you.
All right, and amendment number one, so that everyone should have it on their desk. So it's been moved by Alderman from the 13th, second about Alderman from the 23rd, that we pass amendment number one for Board Bill 100 Committee Substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tru?
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley?
Aye.
Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Griffin?
Uh, no.
Alderwoman Griffin?
I said no.
Alderwoman Triplet? Alderwoman Young?
No.
Alderman Conway?
Aye.
Alderman Ortman?
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer?
Aye.
Alderman Villa?
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Wessels?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida?
Aye.
Alderwoman Bellinger?
No.
Alderman Rowdy?
No.
Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis?
No.
Alderman Schmidt?
No.
Alderman French? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaccaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
No.
Alderman Coan?
No.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Carter?
No.
Alderwoman Kruston?
No.
President Reed?
No.
Alderman Moore?
No.
Alderman French?
Eight i-votes, 18 no-votes.
You change your vote, too?
No. No.
I'd make 19 i-votes, 7 no-votes.
Seven i-votes, 19 no-votes.
By vote, you fail to sustain the motion, Alderman from the 13th. What's before us now is the perfection of Board Bill Number 100 Committee Substitute. Alderwoman from the 5th?
Yeah, Mr. President, once again, I think I've tried to cover all the bases and give more information for those who weren't at the committee on what this bill is about and why we're here. So I would just like to ask perfection on Board Bill 100 Committee Substitute.
Any further discussion? It's been moved that we perfect, it's been moved by Alderman from the 5th, second about Alderman from the 20th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 100 Committee Substitute. All in favor, signify by a percent. Aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Board Bill 101 Committee Substitute sponsored by Alderwoman Young and honors authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of 100,000 dollars, a quick claim deed to Grace Hill Neighborhood Health Centers located in City Block 1335, which property is known as 2220 Limp, containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize the perfection of Board Bill Number 101 Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for perfection of Board Bill 101 Committee Substitute.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, second about Alderman from the 20th. Any discussion? Alderman, please proceed.
I'd like to say ditto to the conversation that happened with the previous bill, and I will just wait because I understand something's going to happen on this one as well.
All right. Alderman from the 13th, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt amendment number one to Board Bill 101 Committee Substitute.
It's been moved by Alderman, and is it on everyone's desk?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved by Alderman from the 13th, I entertain a second on that motion.
Second about Alderman from the 15th.
Alderman from the 13th, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This, it's identical to the, and the arguments are identical to the previous bill. The amount is different, the sale price is 100,000, the appraised value is 1.9 million, 20% of 1.9 million is 380,000, and that's what this amendment would amend the bill to increase the price to 380,000. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 7th, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in opposition to this bill. I will say that when Grace Hill came in originally, they were asking for this sale price to be 1 dollar. We let it sit, and the comptroller's office started looking at it more closely, and the price that was agreed on was 100,000 dollars. We have cut our expenses, our support for healthcare. First of all, we used to give 5 million dollars to Connect Care, we don't do that any longer. Even in our budget now, we had to cut the funding for the lead abatement program. So we don't have the federal grants that are coming in to help us abate lead. Our children are going to be seeing rises in that because we're not doing the preventative care, things that we had been doing. And we're going to be relying on not-for-profit community health centers in order to provide those services once again. I think it's only fair that we go ahead and proceed with the sale. And so with that, I am opposed to this amendment and ask you to support me in that effort.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 8th?
Would the Alderwoman from the 7th yield?
Alderman from the 7th, will you yield to Alderman from the 8th?
Yes.
Alderman from the 8th, please proceed.
On this building, do we currently have a lease with Grace Hill?
Yes, we do.
We didn't get?
Yes, we do.
Go ahead.
It'll be 10 dollars. If you go by the lease, I'm told at an appraisal, if you go by the lease value of this, would make a sales price of a dollar a fair price.
Okay, so what's, how long is our current lease? We don't have any information here.
We have 19 more years on that lease as well.
Oh, 19 more years? And the appraised value is?
Ask Alderman Wessels. If it's 20%, 5 times 340, 2. something.
Okay, and then is that the number that Jim Garabagla gave you?
Yes.
So it was 1.9 million dollars?
I'll have to do the math. You're the financial guru, so you could do it faster than me.
Right, no, I figured that the sponsor, you'd have that information, and I assume it's the same story that they put the improvements in?
Yes, they did. They, as you know, we built this when City Hospital was closing to provide services for the people on the South Side in regard to healthcare. And Connect Care ran it for a number of years. However, they got out of the business and Grace Hill then leased it. And Grace Hill has been there providing the services. Grace Hill previously was in a small building on the corner of 12th and Russell, providing services, and they expanded and took over the services there.
Okay, that seems like they've come a long way. Thank you. Alderman from the 13th, would you yield?
Alderman from the 13th, will you yield for questioning to Alderman from the 8th?
Yes, thank you.
Alderman from the 8th, please proceed.
Okay, so it was one point, the appraisal on this one? I'm assuming it's going to be softballs. I don't know, you know? What should it be? Just whatever comes, okay, that's relevant to the economic discussion. I assume then that the value, that appraised value is 1.9 million on this property? That's right. Okay. And who gave us those appraised values? Well, I believe it was Michelle Duffy and her group, the professional appraisers. And they gave us those values? Hmm, okay. She lives in the 8th Ward. I might have to accept that as a credible appraisal. So again, thank you, Alderman. I just wanted to make sure that was the number. And I see you're being consistent that this was a more valuable property, the price would be higher. So if it's 1.9 million, we are with this arrangement, giving them 1,520,000 dollars of taxpayer money. And again, they had a 25-year lease, I assume it was, you know, the same situation that I explained earlier. They got a 25-year lease at no value to put the money in there. They don't have to accept the 380,000 dollars as a sales price, they can continue to lease. They have 19 years for their equipment to depreciate. But what I'm concerned about is, this 100,000 dollar sales prices seems even more cavalier than the last 100,000 dollar sales price because there's no sales price difference between two properties, they have two different values, that the 100,000 obviously, in each case, was pulled out of the air and not for fair consideration of any type. We know what fair consideration would be with 1.9, but obviously, nobody in the comptroller's office made a justification, they just said, we'll give them both for 100,000 apiece. But if there was some type of consideration, like we realize the value of these services to the city, we believe that these things make it worthwhile, that when they're the exact sales price for two buildings of two different values, that would reinforce that there's some cavalier dollar amount that has no bearing on whatever the plight of Grace Hill is, whatever the plight of the economically distressed indigent population that needs healthcare is, it just has made up number. If one building was worth 40% more, at least they would have made up 140,000 instead of 100,000. But when you look at both those numbers, you obviously know that many of the considerations that the Alderwoman from the 5th Ward believes that we should take into account to get to this 100,000 were never actually officially taken into account because both prices are exactly the same. Now, what is a fair price? We haven't heard anything that justifies any price from 0 to 100,000. Because in both these cases, this entity still has 19 years left on a very, very favorable lease, and they do a very, very good job within the community. And that maybe we do need the documentation before, in this case, we give 1,520,000 dollars to Grace Hill in value on this building. But obviously, the 100,000 on both isn't reflective of any basis of logic to come up with a dollar amount. Thank you.
Alderman from the 11th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm avoid to join the tinkling symbols that supported the gentleman from the 13th's previous amendment on the previous bill. But this one kind of fails the common sense test. We've got a building which is worth a half a million more dollars and they're paying the same amount of money for it. Whether we like it or not, this is 2011, and this is certainly the year of a counteroffer. To say that the real estate market is soft residentially and commercially would be an understatement, but I think it's fiscal folly to pay the same amount of money for a building that's worth considerably more. And again, I realize these comments are going to fall on barren soil, but this is really the first opportunity, we have three branches of government, and I'm not going to be the person to stand here and explain that to all of you because you're in the business. But this is really my first opportunity as the legislative branch to get my bite of this apple. I'm not on that committee, thank God for small favors, and thank you, Mr. President. But the fact of the matter is, this is the first time I've seen these numbers. Have the utmost respect from the lady from the 5th and the 7th, but this one kind of fails the common sense test in just pure raw numbers. Think about it. You're buying a building which is worth a half a million more dollars for the same amount of a building we just passed, you know, 117 seconds ago. So I plan to support with a distinct minority the amendment from the gentleman from the 13th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 13th, you recognize the close on amendment number one for Board Bill Number 101 Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask again for a roll call vote on this amendment. The Alderman from the 11th brings up a good point, and it demonstrates my complaint that there was no serious, no serious attempt to negotiate prices on these properties. And for some, someone else to get up and say they believe in the full faith of the comptroller's office in these negotiations leads me to believe they got to be smoking one of those roll-your-own cigarettes that I used to enjoy. So with that, I'm going to renew my motion.
And it's been moved by Alderman from the 13th, second about Alderman from the 15th, amendment number one. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tru?
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers?
No.
Alderwoman, Alderman Tru? Alderw- Alderwoman Flowers?
No.
Alderman Bosley?
No.
I didn't hear you. Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Griffin?
No.
Alderwoman Triplet?
No.
Alderwoman Young?
No.
Alderman Conway?
Aye.
Alderman Ortman?
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer?
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer? Alderman Villa? Alderman Honowitz? Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Florida? Alderwoman Behringer? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Schmidt? Alderman French? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaccaro? Alderman Ogilvy?
President?
Alderman Coan? Alderman Williamson? Alderman Carter? Alderwoman Kruston? I didn't hear you. President Reed? Okay, let me just call. Alderman Moore? Who's changed the vote?
Vaccaro's already an aye. You're an aye.
She's an aye, please.
Vaccaro? Just a second. Vollmer? Just a second.
Alderman, Alderman from 24th, you looking to change your vote?
Madam Clerk, can you please change my vote to a no?
Eight I-votes, 17 no-votes, one present.
All right. I vote, you fail to sustain the motion of the Alderman from the 13th. Now what's before us is the perfection of Board Bill Number 101, Committee Substitute. Alderwoman from the 7th, you're now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We've been talking about finances and value this morning. However, if we leave the lease as it is, we'll have $19 over in the next 19 years. Whereas if we sell the buildings, we will have $100,000 for each of the buildings that are before us. We also, we're talking about the way to come up with value, and one of the values is community consideration. And I think when we talk about health care needs in the city, there is a serious community consideration here to be taken into account. And I would ask you to support the sale of this facility to Grace Hill. With that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the, Alderman from the 7th, second about Alderman from the 20th, that we, there's been a request for previous, previous roll. I don't think that one's gonna fly out. Been a request for previous, been a request for previous roll. Been an objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on Board Bill Number 101, Committee Substitute.
Alderman Truitt? Alderwoman Flowers? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Griffin? Alderwoman Triplet? Alderwoman Young? Alderman Conway? Alderman Ortman? Alderman Vollmer? Alderman Villa? Alderman Honowitz? Alderman Wessels? Alderwoman Howard? Alderwoman Florida? Alderwoman Behringer? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Schmidt? Alderman French? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaccaro? Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Coan? Alderman Williamson? Alderman Carter? Alderwoman Kruston? President Reed? Alderman Moore? Alderman French? Alderman Boyd? 19 I-votes, 7 no-votes.
I vote, sustain the motion of the Alderman from the 7th, perfected Board Bill Number 100, Committee Substitute.
Board Bill 105, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and Honors Approving the Petition of Owners of Certain-